Yeah, I see that. Yeah.
Good evening and Happy New Year. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's January 3, 2023 City Council meeting. Would like to ask that everyone please silence all electronic devices. This time we'll call on Councilmember Bob Ward for tonight's invocation.
Good luck, Bray. As we begin this New Year 2023, we must first look back and humbly offer you our gratitude for our many blessings over the past year. We pray for your presence as we look forward to the promise and hope of this new year. We pray for your guidance and that you give us the strength and wisdom to meet the needs of our citizens. We are grateful for our city staff for their continued commitment to and dedication in serving our city. We ask that our decisions and actions be guided by the truth, that we be given the courage to do what is just and right. We now ask that you help us to build on what we've learned from past experiences to avail ourselves of the present opportunities and to embrace the challenges of the future. We ask for your blessings upon our city and our citizens now and for the coming year. Amen.
Thank you, Bob. Next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. I'd like to recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility and my duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask that there are any potential conflicts concerning the back end of the line.
Thank you. Our next item is approval amendments November 1, 2022, City Council meeting, November 14, 2022 work session, November 15, 2022 City Council meeting, December 5, 2022 work session, and December 6, 2022 City Council meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the amendment.
It's a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. This time we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask, with respect to item A, a consent agenda, we would like to ask that that be removed at this time. We do have some additional clarification that needs to be done on this proposal, and we would like to bring that back to you at a later date.
Okay. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the removal of item A under the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion or second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item B on the agenda, to adopt an ordinance amendment to the City of Burlington, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-274A, Holiday Leave Designated Effective Upon City Council Approval. Item C, to adopt a resolution authorizing the designation of the police chief to make recommendations to the North Carolina Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission on ABC permit applications effective January 3, 2023. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item are public hearings. Item 1 under public hearing. A public hearing is being scheduled to consider a proposed economic development performance grant and adopt a resolution to support an application for a North Carolina Commerce Building Reuse Grant for Alamance Foods. At this time, we'll recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop. Peter.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I hope you all had a happy holiday and a wonderful new year, and here we are again getting back to business. So, great to be here with you tonight. As the mayor mentioned, we are here to talk about and have a public hearing for an incentive package for Alamance Foods. Alamance Foods is proposing an expansion of their existing operations at 1136 Cedar Crest Drive, putting a 220,000 square foot plus or minus expansion on that building. The company is planning to invest $42 million, $20 million in personal property and $22 million in real property over five years, and this project will create 135 new jobs in the City of Burlington and an average salary over $48,000, and that average salary is greater than the county's average salary here. With us this evening, we have Hannah Kavarek, who is the Senior Director of Finance for Alamance Foods. Hannah will be available to answer any questions on behalf of the company. We also have our partners at the Alamance Chamber of Commerce, David Putnam and Kevin Zostak with us, so thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. So, a little bit about Alamance Foods, and certainly Hannah can support any other information you may have, but this is a locally founded company. Of course, like many of the companies we have in Burlington, started by an innovator and an entrepreneur with the Scott family over 100 years ago, and formally created the business Melville Dairy in 1927. So, instead of just selling, you know, butter and milk from the farm, they created a business and had these nice delivery trucks that you see on the, on the screen here. That was a nice vintage photo. They grew into a facility on, in downtown Burlington that you see pictured actually too. In the bottom-left corner is a photo from the 50s of that facility, and then a photo today of that facility, the same facility back-to-back. And really, it's a company about innovation. In the late 50s, Alamance Foods really developed a novel concept with some other companies at the time for aerosol whipped cream, what we generally refer to as the name brand Ready Whip or its similar products within the refrigerator. So, that is a big innovation. Of course, we all know them for the frozen freeze pops that hopefully everybody in Burlington has a packet of in your freezer, even though it is the winter time. The company operates four facilities in Burlington, one in the northeast part of town on Rahut Street, one on Plantation Drive, the Cedar Crest Facility, and of course, the former Melville Dairy on Worth Street in downtown Burlington. And now, the company has over 800 employees. I will note in reviewing some of work before I came to the City of Burlington, at that time, they had under 400. So, in that six-year period, they've doubled their size and employees at Alamance Foods. So, a great growing company founded in Burlington that we're very happy to support. This expansion will be an expansion of the aerosol dairy product line, so there will be two new product lines installed in this facility. About 45,000 square feet will be refrigerated storage, because you got to keep that stuff cold, and then 67,000 square feet of dry goods storage, and then the additional square footage used for operations. And there's a little image here of the facility, and that's the product lines that are a little bit garbled, but you can sort of see how things move down the line. So, what are we proposing this evening? So, what staff is proposing to council is a performance grant of 1.5% of the total taxable value invested in the City of Burlington. That is estimated to be $630,000 over five years, or a little under $130,000 a year. We are proposing to waive permit fees capped at $100,000 for this project for a total maximum value of $730,000 from the City of Burlington over five years. The total incentive package is certainly a little bit bigger, and early in December, the state of North Carolina approved a job development investment grant or a J dig in the amount of $611,000. That was the first step in approving these incentives for the company. The local governments are then the next step of approving this incentive package. The state is also offering a building reuse grant, which hopefully council is very familiar with, requires a 5% local match, which of course will be covered in our performance agreement cash grant that we just discussed, and then a customized training package in partnership with Alamance Community College for $182,000. And then, we have the city's incentive package, and then what the county has proposed in partnership with the local governments. So, certainly, there are a lot of benefits that I won't get into detailed with this project, but a few that I will point out. This project is revenue positive the moment it gets its certificate of occupancy and gets on the tax rolls. So, the incentive package that we're offering over the five-year period never exceeds the revenue and taxes from personal and real property that we'll be receiving here, so this is a very positive model, shows very strong internal rate of return. The project represents a big investment from an existing industry and a locally founded industry that's, of course, been in Burlington for over 100 years. And as usual, and as you can note by the presence of our partners with the Alamance Chamber here, we work strongly with our partners at the state and local level to put these packages together, and we feel that we've got a good balance between what the state is offering and the local government's offering. And at this time, I'd offer myself and Hannah for any questions that you might have on this project.
Any questions for Peter or Hannah? Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, I think we're all good right now. This is a public hearing, so at this point in time, we'll open up the floor for any public comments. Is there anyone from this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak concerning this item? Hearing now, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain a motion or have any conversations concerning the resolution.
Well, I'd be happy to make a motion to go along with the Economic Development Performance Grant and adopt the resolution to support the application.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Hannah, thank you guys, and appreciate everyone's attendance on this item. Item number two, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider adopting a resolution approving in principle the issuance of essential housing revenue bonds for Community Finance Corporation to finance affordable housing at 2444 Maple Avenue, Burlington, North Carolina. At this time, we'll recognize the President of Good Homes, David Mitchell, and I think Morgan is going to try to get Mr. Mitchell with us via phone. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, Mr. Mitchell is on the phone. Mr. Mitchell, you can go ahead.
Okay. Good evening and Happy New Year. The hearing is scheduled to consider a resolution approving the
You may have to read your computer, Mr. Mitchell. Yes, sir. That's great. Okay, go ahead.
Is it good now?
Yes.
Good evening and Happy New Year, and I thank the council for the time, and it's good to see you, even though you can't see me, I'm watching you on your YouTube channel. Tonight, before you is a resolution that's required for our financing, but by way of background in our workshop, I explained that the state of Wisconsin has a public finance authority which has been set up to provide financing to, for community housing projects throughout the United States. We are, we are in the process of financing $324 million in a municipal bond issue that encompasses six states and eight properties. The property that we are speaking about specifically tonight is 2444 Maple Avenue, which you know as the Oyo Hotel, which we, as you know, intend to converting to a residential multifamily community. The state of Wisconsin has put together very attractive financing for us. As part of their state regs and as part of the IRS regulations, they require the local community and the city council to acknowledge and, I guess, approve the issuance and the spending of this money inside the City of Burlington. There is no, as we go through the resolution, there is no liability in the state of North Carolina, the City of Burlington are not being asked to guarantee this issuance. It's more of a recognition. The recognition has two parts to it. One is this resolution that would allow this, this public finance authority bond issuance, and this money is to be spent in Burlington. And the second is an appointed individual from the City of Burlington to the advisory board, which is, but that would come after, after the season. If that's a request, it's not, it's not required.
Is that it?
Is that it?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell? Yep.
Yes. I can go through the resolution, but I think that that's probably more better read in person by a member of the city staff. The state of Wisconsin has done a number of these, and we are, we're very excited to be part of this issuance. Most recently, the City of Fayetteville approved, I was in Fayetteville, they approved two issuances for two properties that they're converting in Fayetteville three weeks ago.
We're going to keep him on?
Yes, we'll keep you on, Mr. Mitchell. Contact Charlie Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Any, any questions for Mr. Mitchell or for Mr. Huffman concerning this? We were briefed, I think, December 5 of the work session. Is that right, David, when we were brought up to speak?
I have a question of David. David, if you would, for the record, you know, just give you a touch on the, on the obligation of the City of Burlington.
It truly is. You have seen something close to this earlier when the Housing Authority asked for your approval, because the facilities, they were, they were upgrading, Tucker Street as well. FOMC.
Still Wisconsin.
No, that wasn't. That wasn't. But it was the same tax code vision, and here, that tax code is also, the Wisconsin state statutes also require this. You are assuming no liability whatsoever. In fact, we went a step beyond that, and then you will see in section two of your resolution that there's an indemnification here in the event that something goes sideways. So, I think you can feel comfortable that, in fact, you're looking off for anything. This is really a state, a state statute requiring as well as a tax code that says exactly that, recognizing the fact that these dollars are going to be spent in your jurisdiction and for what purpose these taxes are done.
One other quick question. It does not have any impact or effect on our bond and equity.
It does not.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Huffman?
It's from Seattle, Washington.
That's one.
Definitely West Coast. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, item two. At this point in time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on this particular item on the agenda. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item two under public hearings? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak under item two? Hearing now, we'll entertain a motion to close public hearing. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain a motion concerning the resolution for the Community Finance Corporation and their request.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the resolution approving in principle the issuance of essential housing revenue bonds for Community Finance Corporation to finance affordable housing at 2444 Maple Avenue in Burlington.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Tell Mr. Mitchell we appreciate that. See, good? Okay. And, and I know staff worked hard on this and council too along the way, because this was kind of a new caveat to anything that we've really done in the past, other than with the VHA. So, a lot of work and effort went into this, and it's a great project. I think we're all excited about the project. So, this was just another step in that. So, thanks, thanks for everybody's efforts on that. At this time, we'll move to new business. Item three on the agenda, City Council will consider adopting a resolution to provide local match funding in support of the FEMA brick grant for the Maze Lake Watershed Analysis Project. At this time, we'll call on Water Resources Director Bob Patterson and our stormwater manager Amy Barber. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor Butler and council. I'll give a brief intro and then turn this over to Amy. But, so we have an opportunity to leverage some of our city stormwater funds with federal funding through FEMA, which is kind of funneled through the State Department of Public Safety grant programs. And we submitted our project to the state, and we were selected as one of 11 that the state will submit for potential grant funding. And there's a local match that we're required to kind of commit to if, if awarded that grant, and Amy will talk to that in a little bit. But just a little background, over more or less the last decade, we've noticed a lot more stormwater events, flooding events that have flooded City Park and upstream of City Park at Maze Lake and the surrounding areas. In September of 16, about a week or 10 days before, I think it was Hurricane Matthew hit the east part of the state, we had a, one of the most intense rainfalls that I, that has occurred since I've been here, since 97. We had six to seven inches of rain in about three hours, and there were places that flooded all over town that never did before. But in particular, at Maze Lake, the plug blew out of the dam and drained the dam. And one of the things that was very evident from that process was the amount of sediment that was contained in Maze Lake. There was really only maybe a foot to 15 inches of water. I mean, yeah, a foot to 15 inches of water, and the rest of the lake is filled with sediment. So, that got us to exploring and working with the adjoining properties owners, possibilities of how that, that situation may be made better, which would also then help, hopefully help City Park and our issues there. And one of the steps to do that is to hire a consultant to really examine, do some hydraulic studies, and tell us what our, what our options are. So, that, that's kind of where we're at, and we had this funding opportunity that we applied to that is similar to some other opportunities we're working on for other projects throughout the city. So, I'll turn that, turn this over to Amy, and I guess I skipped through our first slide, but she can fill the in on there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'll take spot for the background. So, I just want to highlight some important factors with this project. One, I want to bring up the fact that everyone's familiar with the increased amount of flooding that we're experiencing throughout the city. So, as part of an ongoing effort of city staff in the stormwater division around, actually all staff involved in flooding issues that we're experiencing, we'd like to explore the project possibilities to help these areas that are flooding throughout the city. And one major solution could be regional stormwater retention. And so, we saw Maze Lake as an opportunity to potentially explore some type of regional stormwater project. And so, part of that, part of that effort to explore some solutions would be to hire a consultant through this project to not just study Maze Lake itself, but also upstream and downstream of Maze Lake, including the amount of water that drains to City Park. And the outcome of that study would provide us with alternatives for us to choose some feasible and best solutions for that drainage area for the city to potentially implement to alleviate some of the flooding upstream and downstream of Maze Lake. So, like Bob said, and what's, what we, why we think Maze Lake is connected to some of the flooding upstream and downstream is because it is fed by two perennial streams constantly receiving sediment loads and then being blocked. However, if we can return them, turn the, return the maze, Maze Lake back to its capacity, that, that gives us right there the ability to retain some of that water after heavy storms, but we can also incorporate some things like environmental solutions, wetland-type ideas, plants, things like that. So, those are projects that would, they would come about based on the project study that this, these funds would go towards. It'll be similar to Ireland and Main Street, which is another project that we're actively working on, and we applied for funding, funding as well. We are in the design phase of Ireland and Main Street drainage area, and again, applied for funding for that area as well. We're also looking to apply for funding in the future for Beach, Beach Avenue flooding that's going on there as well. So, this isn't the only project that we have going, but this is the one that is most recent. So, I've already mentioned the significant sediment loads. Some other benefits that this project could bring about is it could go towards the city's commitment as part of the category 4B implementation plan for Little Alamance Creek. As I said before, two streams feed Maze Lake. One of those streams is Little Alamance Creek proper. So, if we were to implement different projects throughout the Little Alamance Creek watershed and the Maze Lake drainage area, those projects will really show our partners and the state that we are dedicated to this category 4B plan as part of enhancement of water quality in Little Alamance Creek.
Is that two areas? One would be underneath Edgewood running to Maze Lake, and the other one would be over on front at the Greek Church. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, and it goes further upstream than that as well, but it would incorporate those areas. And we have maps made, if you'd like me to submit those to you.
Thank you.
So, as part of this recommendation and grant, we are required to have a 25% match. That can include in-kind. So, our total project request was $262,500 to FEMA, 25% being in-kind and potentially funded by the city. So, we're asking council for $47,500 from the stormwater utility budget to help fund that. $15,000 would be an in-kind contribution that would total $62,500 towards that total project cost.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Amy or Bob?
So, the timing of this would be?
So, if we, like Bob said, we were, we're, right now, we're one of 11 projects that were chosen throughout the state, so we're kind of in like a sub-final category. I have to get some additional items submitted by Friday, and if we are selected in the final round, we should receive funding January of 2024.
Move it pretty fast. Move it pretty fast.
I can tell. Thank you.
The state process was like two months, but the federal process.
Good defense on that, Bob. Any, any other questions for Amy or Bob on this? I know that's been a problematic area and something we've dealt with, and Bob really pointed out, it goes back to 2016, but it's been numerous events since then that it's been in that area, so it's obviously much needed. But any other questions?
Is it still, what's the depth of Maze Lake now?
I said it, Amy, too soon, I apologize.
No, that's all.
When I visited, the most recent visit's probably about 18 inches across. You could walk across the lake, and something that I noticed immediately visiting the properties was I, wetland plants were growing in the center of the lake, which they would typically be on the edges.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you can, you can walk across it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
And I think Bob, and Nolan will sort of remember this, in 2014, actually it was in the winter of 2014, we had a substantial storm as we were doing work over in the east plant. And the creek that flows through West Burlington that goes under Ingleman, to plug my house, there's a home built on the edge of that stream, which the downstairs of my modern home, bedroom for two children, kids are upstairs eating dinner. And the creek got up so high that, that day, that night, it actually took the wall out of the side of the house. Nothing about it in your school now. So, the, the concept of Maze Lake and is, the question came up with sediment is, all these years, it's pretty simple. Water runs downhill and sells and holes. And that sediment, and I would imagine, and Bob, you probably can speak to this better than anybody, what might have been the actual depth of Maze Lake at one point in time?
I'm not sure. It's certainly more than 18 inches.
I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of.
It's probably seven, eight, 10 feet if you can make it possible.
That's the concept of the sediment, what it can do over time. And obviously, as there's more growth, there's more runoff, and that issue becomes even more pertinent as you go forward.
Any other discussion on this item or any questions for Bob or Amy? Not, we'll entertain a motion concerning the resolution.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution to provide a local match funding in support of the FEMA GRIC grant, the Maze Lake watershed analysis project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any pose. Okay. Thank you, Bob and Amy. Thank you for your information, your work on this. Item four under new business. City Council will consider adopting a resolution to set a date of public hearing for February 7th, 2023, to consider an application to annex into the city of Burlington a portion of a parcel of land which is contiguous to the current city limits located on the northwest side of 1111 Huffman Mill Road. The property is 3.11 acres in size and .092 acres inside the city limits and 2.19 acres outside the city limits, as in, and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 112628. The applicant is seeking annexation to include the remaining tract of land. At this time, we'll recognize Planning Director Jamie Lawson. Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening and Happy New Year, everybody. Good to be here again in front of you. So, we received a voluntary annexation petition to annex a portion of the parcel of land. The map that I have shown on the screen, the orange shade is the existing city limits and then the gray portion behind it is the ETJ. So, you can see the property that's highlighted with the red outline, a portion of the property that is the 2.19 acres is located outside of the city limits. This site contains the Emerge Ortho building. You can see that already developed on the property. And then, it was also the subject of a technical review committee site plan approval on December 13th, 2022 for an additional roughly 9,000 square foot medical office building. So, so there's additional expansion, building expansion that has been approved for the site as well. So, the annexation, which we are recommending, would seek to bring the entire parcel into the city limits and allow for the building expansion and the water and sewer connection. We are asking for you to adopt a resolution tonight and set the public hearing date for the annexation for February 7th, 2023. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Jamie?
Is all of that, everything that's brown in this map that's outside the city? Is that right?
If you can see where my mouse, the hand is, that's in the city. And then, the area behind it where the building actually is.
I'm looking at this.
Yeah, it's brown. That's right.
All of that.
It's backwards on our map versus.
Yes, backwards on the map. Yep, that's correct. So, the front portion that fronts on Huffman Mill Road is in the city and then the rear portion behind is outside of the existing city limits currently.
So, it's all one parcel. It's just partially in, partially out?
That's right.
Yeah. Any other questions for Jamie on this request?
Just the annexation laws are making this really a mess.
Not just this. It's a lot, it's a lot of things made a mess, but makes it more difficult for sure. The request is for, to adopt the resolution to set a date of public hearing for February 7th. Is there a motion concerning this request?
No.
We have a motion or a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any pose. Thank you. Item five on, under new business. City Council will consider adopting a resolution to set a date of public hearing for February 7th, 2023, to consider an application to annex into the city of Burlington two parcels of land which are contiguous to current city limits located southwest of the intersection of Bonner Bridge Parkway and University Drive. The properties are combined approximately 48 acres in size and consist of Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 106949 and 107041. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie once again.
Good evening again. And so, we received a voluntary annexation petition for these two properties that are highlighted here on the map in red. They are southwest of the intersection of Bonner Bridge Parkway and University Drive. They have also been the subject of a technical review committee site plan approval on December 13th as well for 214 single-family attached dwelling units. The applicant is seeking water and sewer associated with this request to support the approved development. Staff has recommended the approval of the utility connection, and we're asking for you to place this item also on your agenda for February 7th, 2023. You have a resolution on for this as well. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Jamie on item five?
This is Jermaine at this point, but I'm curious anyway. Are these for lease or for sale?
That, that I don't know.
I would like to know that at some point.
We, we generally, you know, don't regulate the components of who is living within and what the owner intends to do, whether they're interested in selling or leasing. I'm not sure if there's anybody here in the audience that could speak to that from the applicant, but.
From the site plan, it looks like townhouses, which would more than likely be around.
Yeah. Yeah. Each individual home is located on their own individual lot as opposed to a multifamily type of development. So, typically, you would see that as a, as a homeowner occupied unit.
So, where is Jamie, where is the, the school, the fire department? Give me some landmarks.
Yeah. So, the, the fire department is right here. You can see where my mouse is.
Right.
And then, the school is, is right here. And then, you've, you've had some other zoning requests further west. And this property is, this is the zoning map. So, you can see the existing zoning for the property is the residential.
This is prop, is, is this the property that you can see site work from university? Does everybody know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
If you're going up to university on the west side of university, you see a lot of site work there, a lot of dirt. It's been moved. Yeah. Any other questions for Jamie on item five?
And I'll just highlight that the area shown in orange is the existing city limits again. So, you can see that that's contiguous, the properties are contiguous.
Okay. So, item five is to request a resolution to set a date of public hearing for February 7th. At this time, we'll entertain a motion concerning item five.
I make a motion to approve the resolutions at the date of public hearing.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any pose. Thank you. Jamie, at this time, we'll move into staff report. So, Jamie, I think you're up.
Yeah.
On that as well as a couple of utility requests, I think.
Yeah. One, one last item. So, this is included in your packet are two petitions that we received for voluntary annexation and utility requests. The first is the property that's shown here in red, which is 2224 Melrose Drive. And then, the second one is shown just down the street as 2258 Melrose Drive. Both of these properties are in the identity residential zoning district and they're both, it's the same, same applicant seeking water and sewer associated with the sites. So, pursuant to the city's adopted utility connections procedures, service procedures, requests, these requests were approved by the city manager and now have been forwarded to you. Staff is not recommending annexation. We're recommending that the annexation be deferred based upon their location, but we're asking that you add these items to your consent agenda for January 17th to, to defer the annexation in accordance with section 4040 and the terms of the annexation agreement executed by the applicant and the city. Any questions that you might have on these? These are very similar to requests that you received in the past that we've gone through several times last year.
They would get water.
Water and sewer. And they're already in that area.
No, it, we haven't been out there. It's a very nice little neighborhood that's developing. Lot of new housing. It looks much better. Yeah.
So, the request is to add this, the approval for the utilities, but not to annex. Correct?
Correct.
And that's, the request is to put that on the consent agenda. Let's do that in the form of a motion. Would there be a motion to place that on the consent agenda?
Move.
We have a motion. Is there a second? A motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any pose. All right. Thank you, Jamie. We appreciate your work on those. Our next, okay. Our next item is public comments. At this time, we'll move into public comments. We have one, Mr. Alex Alfonso, concerning disc golf at the Valley Golf Course. Happy New Year, Alex. Welcome.
Happy New Year, Mayor, Council. 1105 Alejandro Alfonso. Yeah. The first time I came to speak before this council was over this issue of public transportation. Back then, the sticking point, and, and let me go back a little here. We, we all pay for the roads, whether you drive in a car or not. You're paying for the roads. Gas tax tolls don't cover, you know, maintenance and repair. So, I think it's, it's fundamental that there's a public option for motorized transport, especially if you have to have access to, to healthcare, education, food. And that was what was being discussed here back then. And the sticking point then was $200,000. It was a matching grant that was coming from DOT for any city in the United States that wants to set up and maintain a public transportation system. DOT will give you a matching grant. $200,000 was Burlington's share back then. That's, again, to give people access to healthcare, food and education. It's fundamental, I think, for, for local government to do that. And there was a lot of hand wringing over that $200,000 because it wasn't going to be any ROI. There was no return on investment on that, meaning that, you know, that you weren't going to see that back. You were going to spend that money every, every year and it was just going to be gone. No, no return on investment aside from the well-being of those who are using that, that, that public service. But again, a lot of hand wringing, a lot of balking by this council. And it was confusing to me when I discovered the, the golf course, the Valley Golf Course, which you were spending five times as much there and losing on average $200,000 a year on the golf course. That, that's still happening today. So, you can imagine my excitement, frustration, and then confusion when I brought this disc golf deal to the city. I was like, hey, here's your $200,000 back, right? Because I'm talking about a $60,000 to $130,000 direct to the course when you put a pay-to-play option in there, right? And then, another potential $2 to $3 million when you add a disc golf pro tour stop. And that's completely feasible. We're already going to see that in, here in Alamance County. Our Parks and Recs director helped Alamance Parks and Recs attain the U.S. Women's Disc Golf Championship next year at Cedar Rock Park. And I was a little confused as to why we wouldn't bring it here to Burlington to capture that revenue when we already have the infrastructure in place. So, I'm confused as to what has changed fundamentally. And you're almost thinking that you're actively fighting more money to the golf course, that would, and actively discriminating one group of citizens over another. I'm just really confused. And I'd like an answer from these guys. I'm going to keep coming back. This is, for me, it's just a matter of time because it just makes sense. We could have something really special over there. If you look in Jacksonville, Florida, the New World Sports Complex has a municipal property. It has many golf courses, many disc golf courses. They bring in $30,000 a month in disc golf revenue. And 70% of that, he told me, is from out of state. I've called golf courses across the United States that have already implemented a pay-to-play option for disc golf, and they all see a return on investment. Please tell me why we can't do this here in Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate your commitment to that. Next item is council comments. And just a couple of things. One, special thanks to all of our staff members on efforts to get the Carousel project completed and functional for a pretty cool December 22nd event. I don't know how many, what our ridership has been, but it's been pretty significant.
Yes, sir. In nine days, we did almost 14,000 riders.
So, that's, yeah, that's, that's pretty huge. That's, that was a huge endeavor. What a great event. It was well attended and the weather was horrible, but it just kind of got really nice right there at the ribbon cutting time.
It was just in the time, 4 o'clock came and it just all changed.
That's right. And, and then, the other thing that I would like to acknowledge is really a special thanks to our police department, our fire department, our water resources team for their efforts during this cold snap we experienced over Christmas. It was, it was vicious. I know in visiting our fire stations on Sunday, there were 55 calls for service. A lot of people don't understand, you think of fire departments going out when there's buildings on fire, but if sprinkler system freezes and ruptures, that's a fire call. There were 55 calls for service on Saturday alone. And that didn't even end that shift. And talking to, to the chief tonight, I think it ended up being close to 65. So, and I know Station 6 was really, really hopping during that. And then, a lot of power outages. So, the police were out, it was cold weather, single-digit degrees, and, and they're out directing traffic and doing everything that they do. And then, God bless Water Resources because water freezes and what that group does. So, you know, from, from council and the citizens to that dedicated group of individuals, thank you. We appreciate all the efforts that went involved in that, certainly over the holidays. Any other council comments?
And also, I think some of the events downtown was held during the holiday season. It was very well attended. And I believe it sets the stage with what's going to occur downtown to make that area just more and more appreciable. And not only just for things like that, but also for housing and residence. It's got a chance to really make it to the next, to the next step.
And any, any other council comments?
I just wanted to say something else about the Carousel because it was such a wonderful event. And I think that we often don't take time when we, in the, in the, in city government, it's very difficult to get to the place where you actually finish something. We're always moving everything just a little bit ahead. And this is one of the few times that we actually got done. And it was, it's wonderful.
What's a little heat on Nolan?
It's a little.
Well, it did, but you did it. And we all did it. Many, many, many people were involved in all of that. And I met a number of people at the ceremony who were also a part of it. And I met a number of people at the ceremony who were also a part of it, engineers, and they came out because they had a lot of pride in it as well. And I just think that every once in a while, we need to just say to ourselves, we accomplished, there was civic, there was civic will here to get this done, preserve our history, have something available for children and families that was really worth having. So I'm saluting all of the people involved in this, and us as well, for having the will to make sure that this happened.
Thank you. Any other council comments? This time, I think there was a request to go into closed session. David, is that correct?
It is. I'd like to ask the city council to go into closed session at this time pursuant to general statute 133, dash 31811A3, and C, to consider and give instructions concerning the handling or settlement of claims and judicial actions, including one case for Randy Don Dixon versus the city of Burlington, Captain Mark Rasko, of Burlington, D.D. Alamance County Superior Court File Number 22 CBS 788. Second case is Cindy Lackey and John Lackey versus the city of Burlington, North County Court of Appeals, Case Number 22 dash 117, and that's on appeal from the Alamance County Superior Court, Case Number 21 CBS 002. And also to go into closed session for the purpose to discuss pursuant to 143, 31811A4, to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area, including negotiations regarding economic development.
So we have a request for closed session under applicable statute. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? This time, we'll enter into closed session.
You cram all these people in the conference room?
No.
For the...
They don't get to go in there. They're just sitting in the office.
Oh.
Yeah.
I see.
Did David, did you see him?
Well, I expected him to be in there to tell you what you can talk about this session.
We trust his judgment.
That'd be worse hurt, too.
You want to adjourn? Go ahead, you can, I think you can adjourn, you got some...
All right, so at this time, I'm going to look at this, that we have a motion to reenter into open session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
We got two more ayes, Bobby.